to continue along Ridge Pike nearby Church Road and Harts Lane from nine AM to three PM Friday and Monday. Local residents will have access to Harts Lane through Ridge Pike during those times. Shredding Day is Saturday, March 5th at the Miles Park Lower Parking Lot. Donations benefiting White Marsh EMS and White Marsh Parks will be accepted. Remember, this event is open to residents only, no businesses, please. Calling all future educators, the Parks and Recreation Department is currently hiring summer camp staff. Applications for camp counselor and camp supervisors can be found on the township website in the employment section. This is a great opportunity for high school aged youth looking for summer employment. Senator Bob Casey's office will be hosting Zoom presentations honoring the work of four prominent black Pennsylvanian leaders. Presentations will take place each Wednesday from noon until one thirty PM throughout February in celebration of Black History Month. A link to all for events can be found on the township website on the news bulletin. That's it.
Excellent, thank you Fran. Moving on to meet our approval of our meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We don't have any public discussion items at the moment, so we're going to move down to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero eight authorizing the Township Manager Rickard Richard L. Meller as the designation of agent for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant application for five thirty-four Bethlehem Pike following the significant damage received from tropical storm Ida?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Meller.
Thank you Chair Nester. This is hazard mitigation grant related to significant and repetitive flood loss that occurred at the property located on Bethlehem Pike at five thirty-four. Our emergency management coordinator Nick Weaver has been working on this grant application, and one of the items that is needed is the designation of agent. We do this on several other FEMA related when we had COVID expenses if we have a winter storm, so this seems to happen pretty frequently and there's not just one blanket one that we can adopt each time there is an application, we must, we must, the board must take action on the designation of agent. And in this case, it would be for me to sign off on that application. We've engaged to have the property appraised and all of this grant would come from FEMA through PMA and to determine if this property owner wishes to be bought out at the fair market value with hazard mitigation grant funds.
Thank you. Do we have any board questions or comments? Any public comments? Any? Mr. Meller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. The next is regarding supporting gun legislation resolution. Our neighboring township Plymouth Council recently approved their resolution. We have a similar one before us tonight. In light of all the violence in the area, I personally feel that this is a voice to our legislative leaders to support gun control, so that's what we have before us. This is really just to encourage our legislators to pursue action. So, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-nine supporting gun legislation and urging our Pennsylvania lawmakers to enact stronger protections against gun violence?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Meller, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, I think you summarized it very well.
Okay. Any other board comments, questions? Any public comments? I don't see any in the chat. Okay, Mr. Meller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Hopefully it will have an impact. Okay, moving down to motions. Do I have a motion to authorize the public bid for the two thousand and twenty-two road paving program?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Good evening. Our office is nearing completion of the contract documents for the two thousand and twenty-two road program, and so we are here to request authorization to bid the project. There are many roads on the, on the roster this year due to some significant work by Aqua last year, so there, these would be roads that they trench to replace their means, and they have contributed funding to cover the cost of those roads.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment to Chapter Ten, the Historic District, to correct the number of affirmative votes for official action?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to ask Mr. Guttenflank go over this ordinance amendment?
Thank you. Currently, Chapter Ten, which is Historic District, indicates that for affirmative action to be taken by Harb, it requires a majority of the members that are at a meeting. However, the local Historic District Act, which is the enabling legislation for our Historic District, says that in order to have an affirmative vote, you need a majority of Harb. Therefore, you need at least five votes. Under our current ordinance, if you had a minimum quorum present of five people and three of them voted, our district says that's legal, but that is contradictory to the state law, so this amendment would correct that, and we would reflect what the state law says. And this has also been brought to Plymouth's attention since they have a similar, if not identical Historic District, since we share the district, and their solicitors also looking into the possibility of amending their district as well.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? This seems to make sense to me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Do I have a motion to contract with Portnoy Law to collect delinquent refuse fees for White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Chair Nester. This is something that came from our finance director, Kevin Barron. Unfortunately, he's on vacation this week, otherwise he would be here, but the township has, anytime there are real estate taxes that are not received and delinquent, our real estate taxes also include fees, one of which is the refuse fee that's on real estate taxes for those that have refuse collected by the township's trash collector. When those are sent to the county, the county does not want to collect any fees. So the past couple of years, they've been doing it, and I think they caught their mistake that they shouldn't be doing it. So that was brought up to the attention of Kevin. Kevin has had some experience with Portnoy Law, and they collect delinquent, it would just be for the refuse fee, not for the taxes, the county handles that. And under this arrangement, the township would receive a hundred percent of the balance, any fees associated for that delinquent piece of it, a percentage would go to Portnoy, that's how they're paid for their services. So there's no cost to the township. It also allows us to go after those folks because otherwise, if we don't, we lean the property, it could be thirty, forty years before that property transfers, and then on the transfer, there would be a title search and then you would find that there is a delinquent fee from back thirty years ago. So this is a more proactive way to handle this, similar to real estate taxes or any other time you have, you know, an expense that you're not paying for. And again, this is something that they do, that Portnoy Law does, and does for many of the surrounding municipalities as well, and Kevin's recommending it, and I do agree with his recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
This is Delzo, Harts Ridge Road. I'm wondering what percentage of the refuse accounts are delinquent and has that changed over time?
What percent? Sedell, can you repeat that? What percentage?
What percentage of the accounts are delinquent and has that changed over time?
Right, now, the percentage hasn't, I mean, we generally collect, you know, ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our tax bills. Very rarely do people just pay the, the refuse fee and not the real estate, so if they're delinquent, they're delinquent on all of their real estate taxes and their fees, so you're talking a very small percentage, and that percentage has been consistent, and it even was consistent in terms of the amount of people that paid through COVID as well. So there's, there's really been no change, it's just a matter of who's collecting it and the manner in which we collect it. We're not just leaning it and waiting for, again, as I said, the property to transfer. This would be a more proactive approach to, to get our fees for refuse, just like the county goes after folks that don't pay their real estate taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Kristen Vandegrift from the Open Space Commission and thank her for her service on the Open Space Commission?
So moved.
Second.
I know Kristen attended a meeting and then had some work obligations and conflict, and regretfully was not able to commit or, and stay on the committee, so thank you Kristen for your interest and involvement. So we do have an opening on the Open Space Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. Thank you. And then on the other side, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following individuals to the boards and commissions? Beth Howard for Open Space Commission, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and Megan Hector for the Park and Rec Board, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and just to clarify before we vote, Beth would be filling one position in Open Space, and so we now do have another one open, and I don't know if either are on this call to say hello. I don't see either of them. I know they both attended each of these meetings, and both boards and commissions were excited to have them, so they were in favor of this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries, thank you, and welcome Beth and Megan. Do I have a motion to approve the allocation of funds collected from the annual clothing drive to the Colonial Neighborhood Council in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Chair Nester. This was another very generous year by the residents of White Marsh Township, participating in the annual Martin Luther King Junior Clothing Drive over that weekend. We received a tremendous amount of clothes, as I think folks use that now that we've done it for several years as kind of motivation to clean out their closets, but it goes to a good cause. We receive some of the donations for the Parks and Recreation Department, but also we give a contribution to the Colonial Neighborhood Council for folks and their food bank and so on, so it's, it's been a good partnership that we've had over the last couple of years and a good reason, you know, a good way to provide service to those in need, and this year it'll be a check for two hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Such a great event that continues to grow. Very thankful for everybody's involvement for that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number two for Mayor six thirty-three Germantown Pike in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and zero cents?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Following our request from the developer to release escrow, our office inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan, and we recommend release of the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and zero cents, and this is a partial release leaving seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine and sixty-one cents in escrow.
Excellent, thank you Krista. So how far through the project are they?
I would say seventy-five percent or so.
Okay.
What general areas of work remain?
A lot of the final site work, for example, like the wearing course of the pavement, so the, the base course is in, but the final pretty stuff isn't in yet, planting, some sidewalk ADA ramp type stuff. But the building's up, and I think they're working on the internals, which isn't part of this.
So all of the funds that we continue to hold even after this release relate to site work?
Correct.
And is there a schedule for that?
Not that we're aware of, I don't know what their intent and speed at which they work is, but we're there when they are.
Can we get some clarity from them?
We can, reach out. Sure.
This project's gone on a long, long time.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Do we have any other board questions or comments? Any public comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and two cents, and payroll totaling six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents, and pension paid costs totaling five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents for January twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries, thank you. We have a couple added items on our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a deck and roof at thirty twenty-eight Terra Court?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This was reviewed by Harb yesterday. This is a nonhistoric house in the Historic District, it was built in the nineteen eighties. They are enlarging their deck that's existing and adding a roof to a small portion of it. Harb saw no issues with it and made a unanimous recommendation to approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you. Any board questions, comments? Any public comments? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the final escrow release number three for White Marsh Hotel GP LLC, four thirty-two Pennsylvania Avenue, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This is a release request from the developer for four thirty-two Pennsylvania Avenue, which is the Starbucks there at that hotel. Our office has inspected the site and found the improvements that have been installed in accordance with the plan. This is the final escrow release, so after this, the escrow has been exhausted, and we are recommending release in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-six and fifty-four cents.
Excellent, thank you, and?
When does it open? I think they're open. I think they've been open.
They're open.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Were there any plantings required?
There were.
And they did those in the fall?
Yep. Yeah, the, the last piece that they had to do was some ADA ramp work, and they recently completed that.
Great, thank you.
Great, all those in favor? Well, any board comments or questions? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. So that comes to the end of our scheduled agenda. I'm gonna open up for our public comment period, and we do have some residents here, and I believe also on Zoom. So whoever is coming up to the microphone here, if you could please state your name and where you live, and likewise, anyone who's coming through Zoom, if we can begin with those who are in the room here on site, that would be great. Does anybody have any public comments? Sure, you're welcome to come on up.
My name is Kim Swider. I reside at three zero zero nine Chestnut Street, La Pita, and I am here to speak on behalf of some of the neighbors that we have a, a speed issue that's gone out of control. The street is a cut-through street, which everyone knows, and over the past five years, it's, the volume has increased tremendously, I would say probably with Google Maps and ZOOM, Waze, but the bigger issue is the speed. They're not going just five over or ten over, it's a minimum of, I would say, forty-five on an average of sixty to seventy miles an hour. It's become a situation where even with the pandemic and the volume being lighter, what they try to do is they try to beat the light on Ridge, and I have observed with some family members, and I believe some neighbors, several incidences where they come down and they get, if you're familiar with the street or not, if they get to St. Phillips driveway on Chestnut, that's kind of where their speed upticks because they're trying to see the light, and they aggressively are passing cars to get to the light, and I've witnessed one that actually cut a car off and then turned left on red onto Ridge, and if you're coming on Ridge to turn onto Chestnut, it's a very tight turn to turn on. It's a street that has a high amount of children that cross the ridge into St. Phillips in the morning, they walk to school, and there's also an uptick of a lot of kids, I don't know if it's the pandemic or just the volume of children in the neighborhood that are on bikes and walking. The street only has one street light in the middle of the block at St. Phillips, it only has sidewalks partially on one side, it's, it's really dangerous, and we're just trying to be proactive in getting something done, what, what that is, I'm not sure. I do know that there was a recent speed survey done, and I do believe that it may qualify for some, some type of action, possibly speed bumps, but, you know, I'm hoping some neighbors have joined to just maybe discuss this as an agenda on what can be done, whether it's a school zone or speed bumps or stop signs, but right now, I mean, there's some suggestions I personally have, but I'm, I'm not really sure, but something really, there's either gonna be someone killed or, you know, if they're gonna swear and they're gonna hit a car or a house, it's, they're really getting out of control, and it's, like I said, I think some are neighborhood, I think some is cut through, so.
Thank you Kim. Anybody else wish to come in? Come on up.
Good evening, Steve Segg, thirty sixteen Chestnut, along with several other properties along that block. I have talked to several of the neighbors on my end, which would be from, say, the convent driveway to, I almost just said the wood nickel, but to Germantown. Although we agree with everything that was just said, the road has become extremely dangerous, the high, high volume of speed, the amount of volume has been, been getting worse and worse, but we are very wary about a speed bump or speed bumps being put into there. I think most of us will vote against a speed bump. Our houses are pretty close to the road, and I don't know how speed bumps are gonna control it, but right in front of my house, it's a blind hill that people come up, and you can see their suspension unload because they're going so fast. So that means the car is getting airborne just slightly, and the wheels are coming down, so they're not in control of their car. The only suggestion I could come up with on a quick and a very fast, easy way to slow people down is to add a three-way stop sign at the convent driveway. I would think that would probably take less than three thousand dollars and about three hours worth of work by two guys. At least they have to stop mid-block, so that has to help. Now, leaving the convent driveway heading towards Ridge and trying, trying to beat that light, your odds are pretty slow anyway, the light's not that long, I don't know why anybody would try it, and I don't think the stop sign's gonna help, but at least they are not coming that extra three hundred yards from Germantown, so, and then you add the noise of the speed bumps, you put, you could put rumble strips in, there's more noise, there's some concern of launching a car off the speed bumps because they're just not aware that they're there, and they're just chasing the fastest way provided by Waze, and Waze does not give you anybody the safest route, they're giving you the fastest route. So, I think I represent an awful big section of the block between the convent and Germantown, so I don't know where this is going next, is there gonna be a civil committee discussion about it that we can get on and discuss it?
Yeah, once we, so, thank you Steve. Once we hear everybody's comments tonight, I think we have been talking with the police, and we can kind of give everybody one update, I'd like to hear everybody's comments at one time, and then we can speak to everything at the end.
So there is a plan to have some kind of a, a committee to speak about this before any speed bumps or even the stop signs go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Steve, before you leave, can you help me understand a little better what your objection to the speed bumps is, particularly if it's a, a, a speed bump that is paved over, number one, and number two, is it the location between the convent and Germantown that you object to, or the location between the convent drive and Ridge?
If the answer is the speed bump, you need one on both sides of the block. I don't think the answer is a speed bump, or the speed hill, or that rollover thing that's, you know, a whole cars length. The main thing is it's noise, and I, I don't think it's something to solve the problem correctly. Maybe making it a one-way to the light would help slow the volume of the road, not that I really want to live on a one-way road, but I'm sure that would help also. So the big thing is noise, and I don't think they'll be safe because the road is not flat, and like I said, you come up over, and you, most, a lot of cars, not most, a lot of cars are already, their suspension is loose, so they're not in control of their car, so make- So make it another 20 feet or 30 feet down when you're back level, and you still not controlling your car because you have not settled your suspension correctly yet. Now you're hitting a speed bump that you don't notice there. Because the residents are not the people that are doing 60 miles an hour on that road.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody else, are you here to speak to this?
Hello?
We have a couple other residents here, and then we'll get to Zoom. Hold on one second, Joy. Yep.
Sorry. Hi, Tim Garrett, 3003 Chestnut Street. So to Kim's point, I think she's dead on, you know, beyond the speeding, which is obviously a concern, the entire pedestrian experience along Chestnut is an issue, you know? We have partial sidewalks on half of the road. Some of them have flush curbs, so not even a raised curb, right? These are old asphalt sidewalks that are flush with the street level. So no protection, right, from, you know, speeding cars, et cetera. Two would be lighting, you know? The big, the big thing for me is, you know, right out in front of our house, we see kids walking to Philip Neri every morning. You know, kids are not the main issue when it comes to lighting, right? Because they're home by 3 o'clock or whatever. But we all walk our dogs on Chestnut, and we're out there with our kids after dark. So lighting is another, another concern. I'm not saying big street lights are the answer to that, but, you know, I think it should be considered. With regard to the speeding, you know, I'll just, I'll just follow up and say that's, everything that both of these folks have said is absolutely true. And, you know, if a, a study is going to be a part of this, I wonder if there's an immediate sort of short-term solution that we can do with a police presence on Chestnut Street. I've offered our driveway up to, to our officers in the past. They've taken it up here and there. But I do think that could be a really, a really good stopgap in the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you. Was there anybody else here that wanted to come up that's in our room here? Okay, we're gonna go to our Zoom. Joy, I see your hand up.
Hi, I'm Joy Jacobs. I live at 451 Ridge Pike. I'm actually the corner house for Ridge and Chestnut Street. I just wanted to say that, you know, as the other neighbors have said, we do have a speeding issue. We also have a truck issue. Although there are no truck signs, we have repeatedly seen trucks turn, almost hitting cars that are coming down Chestnut Street. I've even seen the police back up to allow the trucks to make the turn. Shocking to me. You know, I've in the past emailed Amy Grossman back in 2017, 2018 about certain issues, asking about speed bumps, perhaps making the street one-way, was denied. You know, I don't know if you recall, but I had a woman come through my front yard, totaling two of my vehicles and going through my garage, you can see her back, all because people make left off of Ridge and went to Chestnut. And then you have the people coming down Ridge, going, you know, 60 miles an hour, and then going through my room. Me trying to get in and out of my driveway is nearly impossible. Nobody wants to slow down for me. Nobody wants to let me in. Nobody wants to let me out. My kids trying to get on the school bus, forget it. The bus drivers beeping, telling people to stop, never. They never stop. You know, I asked for police to come out. My daughter gets one at 7 o'clock to go to high school. My other daughter gets one at 7:30 to go up to middle school. Nobody's out there to stop them. I've had spoke through the crossing guard, you know, she said that this issue has been ongoing. You know, nobody stopped, nobody slows down. I have people walking up and down my street, but yet they have to jump out of the way when people are speeding down to try to get that light. You know, something has to be done because nobody seems to care that there are people that actually live on the street. They want to race down the street, not thinking about the children that are outside walking. I have St. Philip's kids coming by my house twice a day. And these people are driving very reckless. Somebody's gonna come around that curb one day, and, and there's gonna be a very bad accident. Thank God, the time that woman came through my front yard, it was during Memorial Day weekend. Otherwise, that was a Monday, right around the time that, you know, we would have had kids walking. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm thinking there's speed hump, two of them, especially right by this light. If, if they can't race down and they have to slow down, then we're not gonna have people, you know, trying to get that light and, you know, going around. Then you got the people on Ridge that are, you know, off, trying to get the light and just race right through it. I mean, I have accidents here, on average, at least once a month. Something has to be done. Then, when you have an accident down with Joshua, who are up by church, he's using us as a, as a through street, and it's hard to get onto the street because we have no way up at Germantown, so the backup comes all the way down the street. Something has to be done. I don't know what the answer is, but it does have to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Were there any others on the Zoom call that wanted to speak?
I would like to speak.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
I live at 300 Chestnut Street. And we have had a problem, this problem has been ongoing for the last several years, with people really coming down this road fast. Now, my husband and I went to Chestnut Street yesterday, and some woman must have, she must have been going at least 60 miles an hour, almost hit us head-on. This is getting to the point of where this speed has to be controlled. It's ridiculous. And I think we do need to put a school zone sign up, another school zone sign up, and I do think we need to slow the speed on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And Donna, what is your last name?
Kobi, K O B I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else?
I had one more thing.
Yes, please, come on.
Steve Segg, 3016 again. This is a whole, probably a whole different issue, but the speed bumps or humps, or whatever we're calling them, will also add to the bizarre draining issue we have on that road. So that has to be put into consideration at the time of whenever we decide to text this. Because the water comes off the Mr. Court's side, through all of our backyards, and then spills across the whole road. And then, I don't know how many people in this room remember, the lake that would develop in front of your house and the Last Lady Speaking's houses, right at the Ridge Pike, that took five different tries to fix that water drain before it finally was half-decent. So the water runoff has to be definitely put in consideration for the whole block if we change anything along the current asphalt. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, like, just one more thing, but then I do have a second topic. I'm all full of topics today. Okay. And so, you know, being new to this process, I got a little nervous. Okay, so some just things to throw out there as ideas. I do think immediately to the point of more, there's only, on each side of the street, as soon as you enter the street, there is a 25 sign. There's no other speed sign. So like, when they get to St. Philip's, there's no speed signs. There's no stop sign when you come up the driveway out of St. Philip's. So a lot of these parents hate to say it, but they drop their kids safely off and then they buzz by my house. So if they were forced to stop at least coming out of the driveway and had a 25 in front of them, and then somewhere mid-block, a 25, immediately, I think that's cheap and easy. And then whatever else is decided. I do agree, you know, that was one of the suggestions. I also thought a school zone. Germantown has a blinking light in the morning. It seems to be worse in the morning than the rest of the day, but it is dark. So when they're flying 80 and it's dark, you're done if you're on the street. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, kind of related, is crosswalks. So I'm a walker. There's a lot of people in the neighborhood that are walkers. They have pets. There's kids on bikes like crazy going to Miles Park. We have horrible crosswalks. And the one in front of St. Philip's is, that, sometimes it's bolted down, sometimes it's not. It's not up in the summer, the yield sign in the middle. Not that it really stops them, because I've been in the middle of it and they come barreling through. But I do feel that there is no safe places to cross, unless you're at the light of Joshua all the way up to here. There's nothing in between. And I feel like the crosswalks could be more identifiable. I think of this one in Skipback Downtown that is a great situation. But I feel like we need at least one to two more crosswalks between Joshua and then the Market Shopping Center here that are either reflected or highlighted or something of that nature for safety as well.
Thank you. Did anybody else want to make comments? I see in the chat Claire and Vera's comments. Is there a way that we have that recorded chat information?
We have, we have.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry, just one more point. We love our little street, and, you know, I think everybody here, you know, we're a little bit fed up, but we're really glad that we have you guys on our side and looking forward to the next steps. So thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
So if I may, I just wanna, Kim, you did a great job of getting everyone out today. So the number-one job of, of the Board of Supervisors and staff is to keep our residents safe. So this is a big issue, and that's why I encouraged Kim to get as many people as possible out tonight to really express their concern. I've had two kids go through St. Philip's. I know Chestnut Street's been a problem, not just now, but over the years. I mean, I used to worry about them just crossing Chestnut on Germantown because people pull out so fast. So we got on top of this a little bit, and Chief is here tonight. He could probably address some of this stuff, I would think. But it's very important to us to come to some resolution on how we're gonna make the street safer for the walkers, safer for the kids, and safer for people just simply driving down the street. And there's a lot of, a lot of ways to do that. And we are definitely gonna get together and talk as a community to get it done. But I think Chief has some ideas, and if public's done talking, maybe Chief could come up and address some of those things if, if you can.
Yep. Can, yep.
Yeah, if I can, if I could, if I could start. For those that are on Zoom, I'm the Township Manager. You can't see my nameplate on Zoom. But a lot of you have reached out to me as well. And I think that there is a lot of good potential solutions to this problem that, you know, has plagued you as long as, as you live there. You reached out to me earlier in this week, so I had an opportunity to meet with our Chief of Police, Chris Ward, our Township Engineer, Krista Heinrich. And we talked about how best to address this. This needs to be addressed. We believe what you say. We see it. The Chief sees it and studies and so on. The board members see it as well. And I think that there is, I think someone talked about, you know, there might be some long-term solutions and there should, some short-term solutions that we need to address. I think one of the first things we can do is, in talking with our Township Engineers, is perform a study. There was a ton of ideas, all which I think are very reasonable to look into, that we should be taking a look at to see how we can make this more traffic calming, more friendly, more like a street. It's always gonna be a cut-through. We're not going to eliminate that. We can't eliminate people being on a public street. But we certainly can put in some easy solutions, some low-cost solutions that I think could help with some of the traffic and the speeding issues. I also think we can look at some other things that might be a little bit more long-term that we might have to budget, budget for, we might have to obtain a grant for. But I do think that, given we had the Aqua Project that has recently gone on, that's now flushed a lot of traffic, that has come through Chestnut Street, and we have the Ridge Pike Widening Project that's gonna be coming as well, which is going to continue to flush traffic areas that people are gonna look to, how can I get around, you know, these kinds of construction projects? So I think with that, what, what we're recommending to the Board from the staff is that we have, working with our Township Engineer, working with our Chief of Police, that we put together a study. We look at quick solutions. There's obviously enforcement we can do in the interim, but I think some quick solutions based on the things that you're saying. I don't, I don't think there's any, you know, kind of crazy pie in the sky. You've all identified things that are practical solutions to the problem that we can look at and we can review so that we could come back and say, here are some of the things that we're looking at. You obviously are engaged. You want to know what's going on. You don't want just things to necessarily appear, I'm sure. So, you know, I think it's important to the Board, getting public feedback on those things, presenting it to the Board, having the public be able to, to comment on those. And, you know, we're working together. I think that's, that's what we, you know, safety Supervisor McCusker talked about it. Safety is paramount to us. It's paramount to the Chief and the Police Department. So that's, those are some of the things that we're talking about. If the Chief or if Ms. Heinrich want to comment further, those are some of the suggestions that I think, there is a solution to this. I think we all recognize that. It's just about, you know, working at it and looking at what's practical. We just can't go and do everything you said, and then it's not working and creating other problems. We have to do it in a tactful way, and we have to do it quickly. We have to look at what we can do quickly to, you know, we don't want this to carry on for months and months and months and months. What we can do quickly and kind of have a plan moving forward. So that would be, that was our recommendation from a staff perspective, after hearing some of the comments that I received via email, hearing the comments which very much mirror my emails, which I heard today publicly. So that's, that's what we're recommending to the Board and come back to the Board with, with some solutions and authorizing the Engineer to work with the Chief of Police and putting together a study of short-term, short-term solutions and maybe exploring a lot of these suggestions that the residents along Chestnut Street are inquiring about.
Thank you, Rick. Is there any, so I appreciate that, and certainly the Board can chime in on this. Is there anything, a, a study is great. I think that's important and definitely needed. In the meantime, is there something that we can decide upon? I hate putting people on the spot, but can we do something? Chief Ward is here now, our Engineer, Krista. Is there anything we can leave the meeting tonight to give them?
I don't know if it's decisions. Our first steps are always, of course, we go to our Traffic Safety Unit, who works very closely with the Engineer. But the first thing we have to do is go out and look at the road, make sure that what's supposed to be there now in terms of signage, markings and all are there. Because they would have been placed there. We follow the PennDOT warrants to make sure that what we do on our roads are not only to make them safer, but they're also legal. So we're gonna go in and make sure the signs are there and determine, after we determine what should be there is there, make sure if there's other things that should be there, we get them in place over time, through weather, through different things. Signs disappear, markings disappear. We have to make sure that they're there first. And then, from there, we will definitely have increased enforcement and, as best we can, presence in the area. We, you know, we have a lot of roadway here in White Marsh Township and a lot of school buses, and we try to get to as many of our problem areas as we can. And we will concentrate, and I'll make it known to my officers that we need to be there. We try to definitely be there. School, when school opens, school closes. We know we have children walking, as we do with all our other schools. Again, sometimes supply and demand on police officers doesn't always match. But it's our intention to be there. We'll work with the Engineer and the Public Works Department to make sure that what should be there today and what would be appropriate to be there today will be there as soon as possible. And then we'll move forward, working together with the various ideas. It, it's changed. It's developed a lot. Mr. Segg brought up speed bumps. People suggest that. They have their good and their bad parts, but there are other things, other avenues, other things that we may be able to incorporate there. other things that we may be able to incorporate there. Changes a little bit when we have to get into, as Mr. Mellor suggested, some things are relatively low cost and low impact, other things which may work very well, sometimes have some impacts, some constructions, some, some other things that we would have to work through all the departments in the Township and through the Board with. But, you know, we will do that, we've done that in the past, and Krista and my staff, you know, when the problems come up, we go out and look at it, and, you know, each roadway's different, each unique, and they present unique problems, depending on the size, length, and stuff like that. That's, that's our plan moving forward, from the Police Department, and working together with the other divisions of the Township.
Thanks, Chief.
Krista, can I put you a little bit on the spot here?
Absolutely.
As far as, you know, I know when people come in, they're like, oh, this is great, the Township's going to help them, well, when's that going to happen? You know, I'm a resident through somewhere, so, you know, that would be my next question. Is that something where we can, you know, report back to the Board, maybe by next month?
Absolutely, yeah.
And at least look at maybe some of the, because any stop sign, just, just for everybody's kind of knowledge here, any stop sign, you can't put up a stop sign and enforce it without official action. Official action is the Board to authorize advertisement of that stop sign, it's to ordain that stop sign, so that the Police Department can enforce the stop sign and write tickets. So it's all a public action, right? All that has to be done publicly. So, you know, some signage, or watch children, or, you know, things of that nature, we can go out there and work with our Police Department Engineer, Public Works Department, put those signs up. But the bigger things that they would require, if, if it does call for that, they would require Board action, a public process, time to comment, time to hear what we're, what our solutions are, and see, you know, maybe somebody has a, a solution we didn't think of, and, and that's, you know, that's fine, but if that's something that, Krista, you think you could come back in a month and report back to the Board, and at least start to move this forward, meanwhile, the Chief is looking at enforcement, you know, during that time, we can continue to move this forward. It's not just, we're saying it and nothing's happening, there's, there's progress being made.
Yep, I think that's possible, and even before we get to taking action on approving a stop sign, there are numbers to be crunched, to make sure that they're warranted and can be effective. So sometimes you think a stop sign might be the answer, but the numbers don't say the same thing, so we have to get the data and see what all the possibilities are.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I'm just scrolling through the chat here. Okay, so what I heard tonight, just to recap, is that Chief Ward is going to go out and evaluate the road with your officers, and see what can be done, and within the next month, our Engineer Krista is going to be going out and looking at getting data to support a plan, so I, I kind of see this in a couple phases, you know, what can we do most immediately, what can we do long-term, especially as we have Ridge Pike Widening coming soon, we want to look at this in phases, so definitely want to keep everybody safe. Any other Board comments? Okay. Kim, did you have another topic?
Not just the crosswalks was my other comment.
Okay, good, all right.
I'm all on pedestrian safety.
Okay. And I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. I'd like to announce that we did have executive session on February 3rd, where we discussed personnel, and then tonight, February 11th, where we discussed litigation. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, White Marsh, take care.